Get started. And good mornings, everyone. And my name is Charles Hufman. And this morning, I will be your Sunday School teacher. And we're going to cover a very important subject. It's called the Song of Moses. And before we get into our lesson plan, we're just going to kind of give you a brief overview of what we're going to be covering. We're going to open up with an opening prayer, of course. We're going to ask God to bless our lesson. And we're going to get after that, we'll get into some little historical background on a book of Deuteronomy. It will be very brief. We'll get into the most important part of our lesson, which would be the reading of the Word. And we'll talk about it. And at the end of it, we'll give the, we'll summarize what we've learned. And then we'll open up for any questions. All right. Laura, could you start us off with a prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, before I ask for anything, I want to thank you for everything. I thank you that when I call, I cry out to you, Lord. You answer my prayers, Lord, even if it's a minor situation, Lord. You're always there. Lord, we thank you for your protection, your guidance. Lord, you know that you carried us through when we were in New Jersey. Thank you for defending us against any evil that the devil throws at us. So we thank you for all of your blessings, Lord. And if anybody is going through today, Lord, bless them, Lord, and keep them. I pray that something is said that would help us in our walk of life, Lord, as Charles teaches the lessons today. Lord, please give the people that are going through a portion of power, strength, wisdom, peace, rest, and your love, Lord. I pray that we can have that genuine faith to trust in you in all things, Lord. And we know that you have all power and that you are faithful God. Lord, we know that you can do exceedingly abundantly above all that many of us can ask for or think. Lord, we thank you for this day in Jesus Christ's name, I pray, amen.
Amen, amen, beautiful. So now, we're going to get into our lesson plan. And I'm just, hopefully, everybody's feeling well and that the work, the week has been kind to everyone. Uh, we got back from New Jersey last week. I had to bury my mother Thursday, last Thursday. And so, uh, you know, it's been a bit of a fog, but God is in charge. God is good. And we're all still here. And we're starting, we're going to do the work of the Lord. Okay, now, we're going to talk about, uh, the Song of Moses. Very important song. When I, uh, thought about it, the more I think about the Bible and when we read God's Holy Word, the more enthralled I am about, uh, when it comes to, uh, to the Word. And it reminds me of the words of Solomon when he said, "There's nothing new under the sun." And those words ring true. And I, and I had to kind of chuckle to myself. I was thinking about the kids nowadays, they have this thing called, uh, rap songs, hip-hop, that sort of thing, right? They think they got something new, they're all some kind of new thing. But guess what? Uh, rap songs have been around for centuries. And God is the first author of rap songs. He gave Moses a song that he rapped to his people. Now, if they had music to it, I don't know, we weren't there then. But, uh, we do have some beautiful words. And so, we could just call that, uh, one of history's, uh, first rap songs. I'm sure it was the first one, but it was just one of the, one of the first ones. Now, let's look at the book of Deuteronomy. I'll give you a little brief historical, uh, background about, uh, how we came, uh, came up with that word and, uh, where that book came from and, and the, uh, the impetus behind, uh, that book. Just to give a little historical background. I'm a bit of a history buff, so I did some research on this. Uh, the date of the writing, these sermons are given, uh, during a forty-day period prior to Israel's entering the Promised Land. Now, just think about it, they were out in the wilderness for forty years. The first generation died off. So now we have the second generation who knew nothing about the slavery that the first generation, uh, went through. And, uh, they were getting ready, they were, they were right on the brink of entering into the Promised Land that God had promised Abraham, uh, centuries before that. So the first sermon was delivered on the first day of the eleventh month. And that would be like, uh, November to us. And the Israelites forced to Jordan seventy days later, on the tenth day of the first month. And that would be in the book of Joshua, uh, four, fourth chapter nineteen verse. Now, you subtract thirty days of mourning after Moses' death. And that's Deuteronomy thirty-four, uh, eight. And we're left with forty days. And this year was the year of fourteen oh six B.C. So that happened one thousand four hundred years before Jesus was born. So just think about the timeline. This is fourteen hundred years before Christ came along. Now, to kind of give you the meaning of the word, Deuteronomy. Uh, the Deuteronomy means literally the repetition of the law. And it consists chiefly of three, uh, different disclosures delivered by Moses shortly before his death. He had to get all this underway because Moses knew that his days were numbered. And that... Is someone there? Okay. The, the, uh, his days were numbered and soon, uh, he was going to have...
Father, we pray that you allow us to be present this morning for this wonderful, beautiful morning, spreading your Sunday School lesson. We pray that all of our Sunday School builders will participate in the review from the pastor. We pray that all church will get something special out of this blessing that we can share with our fellow members. Father, we ask the blessings of the church hand, we ask this message from the city showing. Thank you for what we are going to have this morning in our special Sunday School class, Father, cast a bed, bed of glory. Please, ladies and hearts, come on, so that we can open to what you have to share with us this morning. In Jesus' name, my heart, amen.
Okay, that was beautiful. Now, let's get back to our lesson plan. The, the repetition of the Volgate system are three discourses delivered by Moses shortly before his death. All right, now, in the Hebrew manuscript, they're called the Pentecost, uh, forms one role or volume divided into larger and smaller sections called the parasheth and the sedram. It's not easy to say, whenever, it's, it's not easy to say when it was divided into, uh, five books because it was done by the Greeks. This is probably, uh, first done by Greek translators of the book, uh, whom the Vulgate follows. The fifth book, the fifth of these books was called Deuteronomy or the Second Law. Hence, our name, Deuteronomy, or the second statement of the laws already, uh, promulgated by Moses. Moses is restating what he's already told the Israelites at the beginning when he brought them, when he brought them the Ten Commandments. And the law basically means the Ten Commandments. Uh, the Jews designated the book, uh, by the first two Hebrew words of Eliphardim. And these are, uh, these are the words. They divided it into eleven, uh, to eleven parasheths. And the English Bible contains thirty-four chapters. When King James translated, uh, the Bible from Greek and Hebrew into English, to make it make sense, they had to divide it up into thirty-four chapters. So therefore, we have the modern Bible where Deuteronomy has thirty-four chapters. Just a little historical background.
Is Regina, is this just her picture up?
Uh...
Her mic is open.
Yeah, we can't do anything about it because she's not around.
Yeah, because Regina...
They're in a meeting.
Yeah, getting some stuff done. I don't know if Regina can talk to you or not.
Regina is right now.
She's in the church, uh, they're having a meeting, so there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, we can't do anything about this. Yeah, we can't reach it.
So...
But, you know, we're recording this, so she'll understand what happened.
Okay.
And hopefully, I'm not disturbing the church, folks, let's, let's hope not.
She probably has got the phone somewhere.
Yeah, that's possible, you know, it's, it's, things are pretty, moving pretty fast around here.
Yeah.
All right, anyway, uh, the first disclosure, uh...
Try, try to see if you can mute any further or this, that's...
I can't filter out, maybe if I mute, nobody's going to hear.
Okay.
So anyway, he just reiterated the, for the last forty years of, uh, what happened. And he spoke to the Israelites and the plains of Moab. And the last year was wandering, you know, their wanderings. And, uh, the second disclosure, uh, discourse is in effect the body of the whole book. And the first address and introductory to it, it comes practically a recapitulation of the laws already given to Moses on Mount Sinai. And the main point I want to, to make with this is that he's given to Israelites what God has done for them, what he expects of them, and what will happen if they, uh, do not live up to their end of the bargain or the covenant that God made with, with them. Basically, that's what it's telling us. And the concluding discourse, uh, relates almost wholly to the solemn sanctions of the law. In other words, just like the laws we have on the book, uh, if we obey the laws, everything will be fine. If we don't, then, of course, there will be consequences. So the blessings to the obedient, you know, he'll keep blessing them. And the curse that will fall on the rebellious. He solemnly adjures them to adhere faithfully to the covenant God made with them and to secure for themselves and their posterity, uh, their promised blessings. And their posterity would mean their children, their children's children, the grandchildren, great-grandchildren, you know, generations to follow. And just to reiterate, the sermons are given on the forty-day, uh, forty-day period prior to Israel entering the Promised Land. And just FYI, the book was translated in the third century B.C., when the Greeks were in charge. Because remember, the Greeks conquered the Persians. So the Greeks, uh, took the writings of the Hebrews and translated it into their language to make it make sense to them. So they did this in Alexandria, uh, Egypt, city that was named after Alexander the Great, who conquered the Persians. Next, we're going to get into God's Holy Word. And this is my favorite part. Right, first, we're going to look at Deuteronomy, the thirty-second chapter, the third to the fourteenth verse, and then verse eighteen. And this is one of the oldest, as you might know, rap songs in the world. And it's called the Song of Moses. It says, "Because I will publish the name of the Lord, ascribe ye greatness unto our God." In other words, he let them know who God is and let these people know, because remember, this is the second generation. They weren't familiar with everything that happened before. He is the rock. He's letting them, he's reminding them. His work is perfect. In other words, he makes no mistakes. Everything he does is perfect. You may not be able to see it right away, but, uh, once you look at it in hindsight, you can see that everything that God does, he does it for a reason. For his ways are judgment. In other words, they're righteous. And, uh, it, it's good, you don't have to worry about it. It's righteous, it's judgment, and, uh, it's, everything is done right, exact. The God of truth and without iniquity, just and right is he. And once again, he's reiterating that God is perfect. So all of his ways are perfect. No matter what he does, you just have to trust him, even if you don't understand it, because it's going to work out for the overall good in long run. Uh, they have corrupted them, corrupted themselves, talking about the older generation. Their spot is not the spot of his children. They are a perverse and crooked generation. And hopefully, he's saying that the, uh, the iniquities and the, uh, the, the, the different fallacies of the previous generation would not spill over into the new generation that Moses was addressing at the time. So remember, forty years out in the wilderness. And Moses was worn out at that time. Can you imagine being out in the, in the wilderness for forty years with people who are stiff-necked, rebellious, and stubborn? And just keep messing up. They're making, uh, false gods, idols, that sort of thing. And Moses had to fight through this for forty years. And that old generation died off. And now he has the new generation to deal with. And unfortunately, some of the stuff from the old generation bleeds over into the new generation. And that happens to us. There's some of the stuff we picked up from, uh, our forebears with the, things that were not so good. And we're repeating some of the same mistakes, kind of like a generational curse. And Moses was trying to break this generational curse, just like our pastors are doing now. That's why our pastors and leaders have to tell us over and over and over again what God wants us to do and what he does not want us to do. Because some of their bad habits, they still bleed over from centuries ago. And as Solomon said, "There's nothing new under the sun." "Do ye thus requite the Lord, all foolish people and unwise. Is not thy Father that hath brought thee? He hath he not made thee and established thee?" Talking about God. In other words, uh, your forebears didn't do this. This was done by God. He's the one that delivered them out of Egypt, out of bondage in Egypt, and, and into freedom. And you're about to enter into the land that he promised Abraham centuries ago. Remember the days of old. Consider the years of many generations. Ask thy Father, and he will show thee. The elders and he, and they will tell thee. So some of the older folks who were still left over, the elders, who remembered the days, what God did for them, all they had to do is ask them and say, hey, uh, could you explain to us what, what, uh, what God did for us, delivered us from, uh, from bondage, and kept us for those forty years? Because if you have, uh, I looked it up, there were about two million Israelites out in the wilderness for forty years. Now, just think about the logistics of that. You have two million human beings, twelve tribes. And then you have a lot of, uh, different clans within each tribe. So imagine trying to manage two million people out in the wilderness, not even, they're not even, they don't even have a permanent home. So Moses was worn out. And the only way that could have been done had to be nobody but God that made that happen. Because, uh, no man or a group of men by themselves could have actually managed such an undertaking. So he said, "Remember the old days, consider the years of many generations. Ask the old folks, and they'll tell you what God did for them." He rained down manna from heaven, which is, uh, the food that God used to feed them and to sustain them for those forty years. And it says, "When the Most High divided, uh, divided to the nations their inheritance, and when he separated the sons of Adam, he set the bonds, uh, bounds of people according to the number of the children of Israel." So in other words, he'd already promised the children of Israel, uh, what he wanted them to have. And that would be the land of Canaan, which is already being occupied by the Canaanites. So it was up to Joshua and God to get that taken care of with Moses, but as far as he could go. Because he and his brother Aaron did something they weren't supposed to do several years before. They were not allowed to enter into the Promised Land. But Moses did get a chance to get up onto the mountain top and look at the Promised Land and see what it looks like, but he wasn't going to go into the Promised Land. It kind of reminds us of, uh, our own little version of Moses we had. We almost got it.
I'm in there.
Little technical difficulties, I got you. Okay, I think we have it now. All right, now, for the large portion is his people, Jacob is a lot of his inheritance. Now, another name for Israel would be Jacob, because remember, Jacob's name, uh, was, was, that was his name first. It got changed to Israel. So sometimes in the Bible, God refers to the children of Israel as Jacob.
Why?
I couldn't understand it.
Why?
Because, uh, when the angel wrestled with Jacob, uh, in the previous lessons, uh, after it was all over, God changed Jacob's name from Jacob to Israel. Because that's the name of his people. So, and those, and so they can inherit the Promised Land. All right, "He found him in the desert, uh, land, and in the wasteful, hallowing wilderness, he led him about, and he, he instructed him and kept him as the apple of his eye." In other words, the most important part of his eye, the most sensitive part of his eye, the apple of his eye, that would be right there in the old iris of the eye. So that's how precious Jacob or Israel, the nation of Israel, is to God. So when he says Jacob, he means the nation of Israel or the Jewish people. And he instructed and kept them in the apple of his eye. "As an eagle stareth up her nest, fluttereth over her young, spreadeth abroad her wings, taketh them, bareth them on her wings." So in other words, as a bird is, uh, especially an eagle, is, uh, uh, watching out for her young, she takes them up and, uh, lifts them up, carries them, protects them. And that's what God did for the, uh, nation of Israel. And we are the spiritual Israelites after Jesus, uh, just sacrificed from the cross. And he, he brought us into the, into the realm. So we're not the physical, uh, nation of Israel, but we are the spiritual Israelites. So that pertains to us too, those of us who are, believe in and follow the teachings of Jesus Christ. And those of us who are saved. So the Lord, the Lord alone led him, and there was no strange God with him. So that's just telling us that, uh, all those idols and all those different, uh, uh, strange gods that the Egyptians had, I think they had about two hundred of them or maybe two thousand. I can't remember how many. And the Israelites, when they were in Egypt, they were actually going right along with the, uh, Egyptians with that. Until Moses came along, we better know that's just one God, the great I Am. So he's making sure that they know that there's only one God. We don't have a whole bunch of gods. Remember, the Greeks had all those gods, Zeus and Aphrodite's and, uh, and, uh, Poseidon and all the rest of them. But there's only one God and has always, always been one God. And that would be Yahweh, or in our language, Jehovah. "He made him ride on high places of the earth, that he might eat and increase of the fields. And he made him suck honey out of the rock and oil out of the, uh, uh, of the flinty, flinty rock." In other words, uh, you know the old saying goes, can we get, uh, blood out of a turnip or we can get something out of a rock? Well, God can do all things. And in those days, they did get sustenance, uh, from, uh, rocks in other places where you wouldn't normally expect, uh, to get sustenance. So for forty years, God had all kinds of different ways where he sustained the children of Israel to make sure they didn't starve to death. And they were nice and healthy by the time, it's, uh, time for them to enter into the Promised Land. It says, "Butter of kind and, uh, the milk of sheep, uh, with fat lambs, rams of the bread of Bashan." In other words, some of the best sheep, because Bashan was a place that had some really good sheep, good rams, and some really good, uh, 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 lamb meat. And the goats, some of the best animals. And the fat kidneys of wheat, some of the best crops. And thou drink, uh, drank the pure blood of the grape. In other words, nice juicy grapes. And they made wine with the grapes, you know, like they did in ancient times. And, uh, like I said, a lot of good, healthy stuff. And that's what it's basically saying, that God sustained his people with all the best stuff and kept them nice and healthy and strong. "Of the rock that beget, uh, thee, thou art unmindful and hast forgotten God that formed thee." Now, the rock they're talking about is God. Remember those old Prudential commercials where they showed the Rock of Gibraltar? And how sturdy and how stable, uh, Prudential is? Well, the main rock that's even stronger than the Rock of Gibraltar, that would be God. And Jesus is also referred to as the rock. In other words, strong, sturdy, unmovable, you know, you can't, you can't destroy it. It's just, you know, he's just that powerful. He's all-powerful, he's all-stable. So it's telling us, uh, in other words, stability. You can count on God. He's never going to change. He is never going to desert you. He is never going to leave you. He's never going to leave you high and dry. Humans will, but we know that God won't. So he is the rock. Now, a couple of interesting key verses from Moses. And these I had to pay attention to because I heard them reiterated in the, in the, in the New Testament. And remember, Jesus did a lot of quoting from the Old Testament. And one of them I found interesting. Uh, Moses said, "Do not add to what I command to you and do not subtract from it, but keep the commands of the Lord, your God, that I gave you." Now, if you look at the last chapter in the book of Revelations, it says, "For I testify unto every man that heareth the words of the prophecy of this book. If any man shall add unto these things, God shall add unto him the plagues that are written in this book. If any man shall take away from the words of the book of this prophecy, God will take away any, uh, take away his part in the book of life and out of the holy city and from the things that which are written in this book." Also, Moses said this, and I love this. It said, "Hear, O Israel, the Lord, our God, the God Israel, the, the Lord is one. Love the Lord, your God, with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your strength. The commandments that I give you today are to be upon your hearts. Impress them on your children. Talk about them when you sit down at home and when you walk along the road, when you lie down and when you get up." That's in Deuteronomy six, uh, four to seven. And in Matthew twenty-two, thirty-four, uh, twenty-two, thirty-four to forty-one, Jesus said unto them, "Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart and with all thy soul and with all thy mind." Sound familiar? This is the first and the great commandment. The second is likened to it, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. On these two commandments hang all the law of the prophets." So this is a summary of the entire law that Moses delivered to the Israelites. Moses put it in, uh, the words that were given to him by God. And of course, Jesus summed the whole thing up. So I thought that was interesting, and I thought that was fascinating. So I love those two verses, I just had to share those with you. All right. And we'll get out of this for right now. And we'll get us some more, uh, information. All right, now, the Song of Moses is a poem, a poem that was recorded in Deuteronomy thirty-two, uh, one to forty-three in the Old Testament. The Bible tells us that on Mount Nebo, and in fact, that's a church in Shreveport, Mount Nebo Baptist Church, so it was named after that. Now, historical background, Moses, uh, met, uh, God met with Moses and Joshua, Deuteronomy, when he was going to lead the Israelites after Moses' death. And the Lord told him that, uh, uh, after Moses' departure, the people of Israel would go back to the covenant that God made with them and worship, would go back on the covenant that God made with them and worship the heathen gods of the Canaanite nations. And that's exactly what happened later on. And a lot of times, we do that in, in our modern times, in our Christian walk. That's why we have to be reminded over and over and over again about the covenant that we made with God as Christians. Because a lot of times, we go down, we, we, we go back on it. Any questions on that? And now, the, the Lord, uh, told Moses to write down the words of a song to teach the peoples of God's ways so that it may be a witness for me, this is God's quote, "A witness for me against the children of Israel." Because he'd already forewarned them what they're going to do. And God always tells us what, he, he knows what we're going to do before we know what we're going to do. And, uh, so Moses did as he was, uh, told in Deuteronomy thirty-one, uh, twenty-two. And, uh, then he spake, spoke to the, uh, of the hea- hearing of the all the assembly of Israel, the words of a song until they were ended. Deuteronomy thirty-one, uh, thirty. All right, we're going to, uh, summarize now. And this is important, I want you to hear this. It said, uh, "Israelites are commanded to remember four things." Four things, and, and so are we, this pertains to us too. God's faithfulness. He's always faithful, he never changes, he never breaks his word. He does what he says he's going to do, unlike us humans. God's holiness, God's blessings, and the most important, his warnings. The first three chapters recap the trip from Egypt to their current location. In other words, how they got to where they are, just forty days outside of the Promised Land. Chapter four, uh, uh, is a call to obedience, to, uh, to be faithful to the God who is faithful to them. In other words, God kept his end of the bargain, of, of the covenant that he made with Abraham. The only ones who were having trouble keeping their end of the bargain or the covenant were, were the children of Israel. And we, as a spiritual children of Israel, we're having problems with that too because we see a lot of, uh... because we see a lot of turmoil that's going on within various churches, even into today's world. With all the technology we have, all the knowledge and wisdom that we have, all the available information we have, and we're still doing things that are contrary to what God wants us to do. And as Solomon said, "There's nothing new under the sun, so what was done then is still being done now." Chapter five through twenty-six are repetition of the law, the ten commandments, which we have to be reminded of pretty much all the time, because we keep breaking them. They did, and in today's world, we do too, unfortunately. The laws concerning sacrifices are special days. The rest of the laws are given to the new generation, the one that did not experience slavery in Egypt. Blessings are promised to those who obey, real simple, not rocket science. And famine is promised to those who break the law, just like if you break the speeding laws and you get caught, you're going to get a ticket. You already know that a speed limit is, let's say, sixty-five miles per hour. If you go eighty-five miles per hour, you can't be too surprised if you get a ticket and you got to pay a fine. Same thing. The theme of blessing and cursing is continued in chapters twenty-seven to thirty. This portion of the book ends with a clear choice set before Israel, as well as us. We're no different, remember, we're the spiritual Israelites. So what pertains to them pertains to us. "I have set before you life and death, blessing and cursing." God's desire for his people is founded in what he recommends, choose life. And that's, in summary, that's what we need to do, choose life, because the choices are clear. You got two, two choices to make, you got heaven and hell, you got life and death. Heaven means eternal life with Jesus Christ, and hell means eternal death with you-know-who, and that's not the guy you want to be with for the rest of eternity. In the final chapters, Moses encourages people, encourages his people, the people, commissions his replacement Joshua, record, records a song, in other words, one of the oldest rap songs in the world, that Song of Moses, and gives a final blessing to each of the tribes of Israel, twelve of them, two million people. How he got that information around the two million people, I have no idea, but he got it done. Only God can make that happen. Chapter thirty-four relates the circumstances of Moses' death. He climbed Mount Neshah, where the Lord showed him the promised land that he could not enter, and we know why. At a hundred and twenty years old, still good with eyesight and strength of youth, Moses died in the presence of the Lord. And the Book of Deuteronomy ends with a short obituary of the prophet. Foreshadowing, many New Testament themes are present in the Book of Deuteronomy. As we know, and in today's world, history repeats itself, we're doing the same thing that those guys are doing. God has still given us the same opportunity. Sometimes we take advantage of the opportunity, sometimes we mess it up, just like they did. The foremost among them, there is a necessity of keeping perfectly the Mosaic Law and the impossibility of doing so. That's why Jesus did away with the law and gave us grace, because it's impossible for anybody to completely adhere to the law. And the law was given to the Israelites to give them a guideline to keep them from completely going berserk. So, you know, we have to have some kind of laws, people still break them, but if you follow most of the laws most of the time, then we can cap a pretty orderly society. And it says, "The endless sacrifices necessary to atone for the sins of the people who continually transgress the law would find their fulfillment in a final, once-and-for-all sacrifice of Christ." And that's in Hebrews ten, ten. Because of his atoning work on the cross, we would need, we would need no further sacrifices for sin. So you get the point to this, it all leads back to Jesus. The law was something that was impossible for the Israelites to follow fully, so they had to keep making sacrifices to atone, and atone means become at one with God, to get back into the God's good graces. But Jesus came along, he relieved us of that burden by making himself the perfect sacrifice, with no blemishes, no sin, no anything. That's the only kind of sacrifice that actually worked. So Jesus became the perfect sacrifice so that we wouldn't have to do that anymore. All we have to do is have faith and follow the teachings of Jesus Christ and live the way that he wants us to live. Not hard, not a hard one, it's not rocket science, it's not brain surgery, it's really pretty darn simple. God's choosing of the Israelites as his people foreshadows his choosing of those who would believe in Christ. In Deuteronomy eighteen, fifteen to nineteen, Moses prophesies of another prophet, the ultimate prophet, who, to come, who is the Messiah. Like Moses, he would receive and preach divine revelation, and he would lead his people. Jesus led us, is leading us to the promised land, which of course will be heaven, everlasting life, and God's kingdom. All we have to do is do what he wants us to do, and it's real simple, it's not that hard. In the final chapters, Moses encourages the people, commissions his replacement Joshua, records a song, okay, I went over that. Now, God's choosing of the Israelites as a special people foreshadows, and this is important, I want you to listen to this. His special people foreshadows his choosing of those who would believe in Christ, and that's in First Peter two, nine. In Deuteronomy eighteen, fifteen to nineteen, Moses prophesies of another prophet, and the ultimate prophet, okay, we went over that. Now, the practical application of the Book of Deuteronomy underscores the importance of God's word. It is a vital part of our lives, although we are no longer under the Old Testament law, this is important, we are still responsible to submit to the will of God in our lives. Simple obedience brings blessings, and sin has its own consequences. Once again, not a hard one, that's a real easy one to figure out. Now, God makes it so simple and easy for us. We don't have to be rocket scientists, and we don't have to be brain surgeons to understand what God is giving us. He's giving us two choices, okay? Either obey what he wants us to do and live with him forever in heaven, or rebel and live forever with the devil in the other place. None of us is above the law. Even Moses, the leader and prophet chosen by God, was required to obey. The reason why he was not allowed to enter the promised land was that he disobeyed the Lord's command, and that would be found in Numbers, the twentieth chapter, the thirteenth verse. And we're not going to go into that, because I don't want to go over to besurce the name of Moses, but, you know, he did something he wasn't supposed to do, so there were consequences. He and Aaron got into some kind of adultery thing, I can't remember all the details of it, but whatever it was, it wasn't good, and it was something that was very displeasing to God. We can look it up, that's not a problem. Right, during the time of his testing in the wilderness, Joshua, Jesus quoted from the Book of Deuteronomy three times, Matthew, the fourth chapter. In doing so, Jesus illustrated for us the necessity of hiding God's word in our hearts, in other words, keep it right there where the devil can't get to it, that we might not sin against him. And that would be in the Book of Psalms eleven, one hundred and nineteen, and verse eleven. If you'd like, we could look it up and find out what Moses did, and that would be in Numbers twenty, thirteen. And I have the Bible here with me. So just give me a moment. And we're going to find out, anybody have any questions about anything? There's always temptation to sin, all the time, that's never going to go away. Then my wife asked, what did Moses do?
He hit the rock with the stick.
Okay, that's right, I remember now. It was something that God did not want him to do, so I do remember now, yeah, that's what I was trying to remember. Thank you, sister. I knew I could count on you. Well, I enjoy myself, and hopefully, we got something out of it. And if there are no further questions, or you have anything else, we can do. All right, okay, well, we'll go ahead and let you go right now. And we just want to say thank you for your attendance, and thank you for your patience, and hope to see you all next week, the good Lord willing.
You guys have a great rest of your Sunday and week. God bless.
Thank you so much, God bless all of you. All right, have a blessed day.